Gets really quiet then.
When the microphone.
Six thirty, call meeting to order. Certify compliance with the record law?
We are complying.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hayden.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler.
Here.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss, Hapless, absent, we have a court.
Next we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in second to adopt the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, it's adopted. Next we have public comments, the floor is open for anybody who would have public comments on any item that's on the agenda or any other topic, please identify yourself for the record, again, the floor is open for public comments. Hearing none, we did have these scheduled appearances this evening, next we have the consent agenda, the following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote, individual item which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Bartender's license for Amanda L. Olstein and Coriana J. Beederman for the cell block.
Everything's fine.
Okay, someone like to make a motion concerning the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, it's approved. Next we move on to the business agenda, mayor's report, not too much to report. I was going to talk a little bit about the swimming pool, but of course that's on the agenda a little bit later. I do want to make a comment, I thank you to the two people on staff, obviously Scott and Matt, as far as these pool bids, sometimes you get a feeling people said there's nothing going on, there's a lot of stuff going on, but and we were trying to get these things together, and so again, appreciate their efforts to bring the culmination to the bids that we'll be talking about later on the agenda, that's all I've got. Any questions? Next one, administrator's report.
The only thing I want to touch on, I know there's the budget update and I saw, it's that time of year where it's kind of all budget all the time for us. And so, I know we talked a little, you know, a fair amount about the process, sometimes I forget that, I mean, because I look around the table, obviously Tom's making the second bid on the council, but Travis is our, it's our longest member here, only about what, five plus years. And so, anyone who'd been involved in the budget process, you know, at any given time when we go through these, or especially when you start meeting with the K Ds coming up, if you have any questions at all, or sometimes I think we go through these a little quick, please don't be afraid to ask questions, especially some of the newer folks. The last thing that staff ever wants to hear is part of a budget process or somewhere after a budget is passed on down the line that, well, I guess I didn't really understand what that, when that issue was about or things of that nature. So please, you know, don't, don't ever be afraid to ask questions or explanation or clarifications as we go through this process. Again, I know it seems pretty quick and, and you know, we try to, we try not to assume that everyone, you know, knows certain things, but I just never be afraid to ask. But going into the process, and we, you know, a lot of people, the budget time is kind of a drudgery, it's a necessary evil. For those of us who enjoy it, it's kind of a fun time of year, but you know, there's always talk about, oh, we can't afford this, we can't afford that. You know, that, you know, certainly we get in situations like that, and one thing I guess I did want to point out here tonight is, you know, we have a lot of good things going for us moving forward in the city of Duran. Our equalized valuation is up significantly for the fourth year in a row, we almost had a five percent increase. Over the last four years, it's increased almost eight percent each year. And so the equalized value is basically the state's attempt to compare the valuation of everything in the city of Duran to, you know, the values elsewhere as in the, in the state. And so our aid formulas from the state are based on that, our allocations for the school district and the county are based on that equalized valuation as well. In short, you want to see that equalized valuation continue to grow and has. Clearly we were helped this year by, by QuickTrip. So, so similarly, you've heard me talk about the fact that our ability to raise our levy, our levy limitations, the levy being the amount that the taxpayers pay to the city to run operations is, is basically limited by the amount of new growth that we have every year. So for example, last year we only had point three, three eight percent increase in, in new valuation, which only allowed us to raise our levy just over ten thousand dollars. This year, a big chunk of due to QuickTrip, about two point two five percent, second best in the county. And again, and that growth helps the county grow, because the county is, it was almost double at least this year as well. So again, that's a positive thing, and obviously what QuickTrip has brought to towns has been a positive. We talked at length about the extra funding we're going to get for shared revenue, that's been confirmed, we're getting an extra, you know, an extra ninety, ninety-three million dollars, ninety-three million, my goodness. Yes. Miss, Miss Place does the point there. Ninety-three thousand dollars, we were talking about that at length, but, boy, oh, boy. Another, another piece of good news we got just even this morning, our estimate for our general transportation aid, it's going to be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year, which is an increase of eighteen thousand dollars. So that gives us, you know, math, the ability to use a few more dollars to, you know, like work on some of the repairs that we, we did just today, that you'll be talking about a little later. Those numbers, we knew those numbers were going to go up, the more money we put into streets like we did with Third and Laneville last year and Seventh a few years ago, that drives that up and so we, we get more money for those things. So that's, that's a positive, but it was just a couple of years ago, it was, it was under a hundred thousand dollars and it's a hundred and thirty thousand this year. So again, the state is helping us out to some degree and we're thankful for that. So again, starting off, the, the big unknowns that we continue at this point, we, you just preliminarily in the budget, we're looking at about probably about between a four and a five percent increase in salaries, that's kind of what I built in, but we're still looking to get some surveys back from, from other people. Hopefully when we're at the Lake Wisconsin municipalities meeting, one of the things I really want to bring up to those folks, it would be nice if they had some ability to run a survey like that for all of our municipalities every year to kind of help us out a little bit, because we struggle every year, and obviously it's even getting even harder with the, with the issues that everyone's having, finding, finding help. Obviously we're not immune to that and honestly, we've talked at length about how difficult, especially in our public safety areas, of finding qualified staff and you'll, you'll continue to hear that throughout the state. So we're trying to stay on top of that and then that dreaded health insurance increase, I built ten percent in, hopefully we can, we can keep it in that ballpark again, but we aren't going to get those figures again, I'm told, until very close to Halloween, which is just a couple of weeks away from our, our deadline for, for the public hearing. So we'll keep working on all of those items and again, we have the public works meeting on the, on the ninth, public safety on the eleventh, and that's where we get into the meat of all those questions on operationally and capital for, for all of our departments. So that's right around the corner.
Can I ask a quick question on equalized valuable, QuickTrip? So obviously that came up, does that spike or will that stay the same?
Oh, that stays the same, yeah.
So it's not like that'll then taper down with taxes?
No, no.
That's clearly the property value, not, doesn't have anything to do with like sales taxes?
Correct. Yeah, the only, you know, the sales tax piece, the, so the only benefit of the sales tax is, well, the state and the county.
In the shared revenue.
So it's, yeah, so the state gets five percent, county gets point five, that comprises our five and a half percent that we have in the state of Wisconsin. Like there's only just a handful of counties that don't have a sales tax in the state. So yeah, so the, the value of that should, I mean, in, in frame, it should continue to go up a little bit more as again, the costs of buildings go up. So, so yeah, that's up, but again, that's positive. That's really all I have.
Any questions for the city administrator? Hearing none, we'll move on to the police department, Chief Ridgeway.
Yeah, so I wanted to address the, this week's courier wedge, I don't know if anybody has seen it yet, if everybody has seen it yet, but the headline is Pepin County Sheriff will need three new squad cars in twenty twenty-four, and then right below that, city of Duran called out as a poor policing partner. This is the headline of the local newspaper this week, so I wanted to address that so the citizens get the full truth on what's actually happening. So I'm going to remind citizens that the Duran Police Department isn't a twenty-four hour agency. We've never been a twenty-four hour, I shouldn't say we've never, because I don't know what happened before I was here, but when I came here, we've never been a twenty-four hour agency. We, we covered call time and we cover emergencies when we get called out. We dropped call time last year for several reasons. We're covered by the sheriff's department in emergency situations per state statute. It is a requirement of all sheriff's departments to cover emergencies in their municipalities in the absence of a local police department. We had several meetings on this, we asked the sheriff's department to cover the city of Duran in our absence for emergencies if Duran officers were not available. We'd never once asked them to cover non-emergency calls. If a call could wait until an officer was on duty, it would, it would happen, it could wait, it could wait till an officer checked down in the afternoon. So we've done, I believe we've done a great job still fulfilling our obligations to the citizens of Duran, responding to emergency calls. We were requested via email a couple of months ago to have a meeting, they wanted to come, I believe, to a public safety meeting, because they addressed that there were two calls that we had neglected to respond to. And after several months, we finally got a response on what those two calls were, and I'll go into that a little bit further down, but I'm, it's, it's important that you guys know that they wanted to talk to us, the county did, over two calls, and I'll explain what those two calls were in a minute, but I don't want to get off track of what I have written down here, but. So I want the public to hear the truth, not what was written in this article. The article states that the Duran Police Department has struggled to fill night shifts and weekends, which is absolutely incorrect. Yes, the weekends we have struggled to fill, we have not missed a single night shift in twenty twenty-three. It says in this article several times by county administrator Pam Hanson, who obviously does not have the facts that we missed night shifts, those are absolutely not true, we did not, we have never missed a night shift, that's our priority. We offer overtime if an officer can't work, I've come out and worked night shifts during the week, and if for some reason it's been a terrible struggle, I've made sure that somebody was available to respond from home. There's been nights when I've taken cars home because an officer needed to leave early, whatever it is, I made sure that we were available and we're always, always covering night shifts. And yes, there were, there are weekend day shifts, as everybody knows, we don't have our part-time staff right now. Our part-time officer that's really been able to work a lot is filling in for an absence that we have in our agency right now. So that has limited our part-time staff as well. The article states that the city of Duran has no obligation to reimburse the county for many nights that they have covered for us. Again, I asked Pam Hanson, what nights did we not cover? Administrator Rasmussen, Mayor Milliron, and I have been very clear to Sheriff Weiner that in our department's absences, we only want what is required by law, that is it. We want the county sheriff to keep the peace in our community, just like he does in every other area of this county. Our citizens deserve that service and it's required of the sheriff's department to do so. We have never asked Sheriff Weiner or his staff to take any cases that can be put on hold until a Duran officer is on duty. We are open about the fact that we are not a twenty-four hour agency, our budget does not allow that. With that said, we have been, we've done a great job responding to all emergencies in the city of Duran, and I'll tell you about the, the emergencies that we've responded to and the two calls that they say we missed. We have been in contact with county administrator Pam Hanson through email the past few months. During one of the emails, she accused us of missing two calls. Throughout the next few emails, administrator Rasmussen requested that she tell us what two calls we missed, as we were, I was unaware of them. I checked with every officer in the city of Duran and I said, are you aware of any calls that we have missed to serve the citizens of Duran, and nobody could think of one. They were disappointed that the county administrator would even insinuate that we missed an important call, or even the sheriff or the chief deputy, none of them came to me to say, you missed a call, none of them. The administrator of Pepin County is the one who has been contacting Scott and myself via email, or Scott mainly via email, stating we missed two calls. So throughout the next few emails, we requested several times that they tell us which, what those calls were. Pam took several months to respond, and her response was that we missed a domestic abuse call in March and a potential search in May. I looked into these situations and this is what I found. On Sunday, March twenty-sixth, I was off duty, I was at home, I was off duty. I received a call at seven forty-four A M. from the Pepin County Dispatch Center. They informed me that there was a domestic in the city of Duran. I informed them that Officer Sam McGrane was scheduled to start at eight A M., which is our normal start time for our agency. As that is, oh, okay. I told them that I would call him and see where he was, and if he was close, I would have him respond, if not, I was planning on coming out. I called Officer McGrane, he had just pulled in and he was picking up his squad car. I told him that we had a domestic and that he should check on quickly to respond. The call came in at seven forty, they called me at seven forty-four, Officer McGrane arrived on scene at seven fifty. The deputy arrived at seven forty-four, the case was handled by our agency from that point forward. Our officer responded to that case in a reasonable amount of time and we handled the situation. The second case that, that she gave us was on Sunday, May twenty-eighth, the city did not have day shift coverage that day. La Crosse County Sheriff's Office called and wanted to search a residence in the city for a probation-related search. The county deputy, Pepin County Sheriff's Office deputy spoke to the La Crosse County, myself and John were not available. They called us, we were not available, the county spoke, or the deputy spoke to La Crosse County and told them that the city didn't have a day shift car on, and La Crosse County decided to postpone that search at that time. That was the second call that we apparently missed, no emergency to the citizens of Duran. They could have waited until three o'clock when our officer checked on, but they chose not to, they postponed it. That was Pam's second example, in turn, I say that was the sheriff's department's second example of us missing a call, because Pam is obviously getting this information from the sheriff's department. That was the second call we supposedly missed. I did not want to go back and forth about who helped who when, but I will state this. The Duran Police Department has won above and beyond for the citizens of Pepin County under my leadership. Several years ago, when I first started here, Pepin County Sheriff's Department had a local resident who went missing from a group home. Deputies responded to that call, did very little to inform the public of what was going on. I called out several officers from our agency to search buildings. We searched little buildings up behind the golf course, we searched the little building out here on the bike trail. I called in our staff to search for a missing county resident. I was in the dispatch center, a jailer dispatcher was concerned about the lack of response that they got for this county resident. We printed out missing person flyers, I went around the city of Duran and I posted missing person flyers in an attempt to help locate this person who ended up being found dead. I have done so much for this county and to see this headline and this Pam Hanson in here is disappointing. And I'm going to continue on cases that the city of Duran has helped the sheriff's department on, because it's obviously getting missed by certain people that we assist them just as much as they assist us. So again, I don't want to go back and forth, but I'm going to, because I don't want to have our name out there that we aren't providing a good service. Here are some examples of cases that the Duran Police Department has assisted the citizens of the county in the absence of the sheriff's department or while assisting the sheriff's department. Domestic abuse incident near Ella, Officer Erickson arrived on scene, Officer Erickson at, it was at three fifty-five A M. There are certain times on the weekends where the city of Duran officer is the only officer on duty. Now, sheriff's office and Pam may say that's not true, we are on duty twenty-four seven, that frankly is not true. They handle call time the same way we do on certain days of the week. In this certain case, Officer Erickson at three fifty-five, I'm sorry, I'm getting my two cases mixed up. Officer Erickson on this domestic situation, the office, the deputy was down in the Pepin area is what Officer Erickson thought on this case. Officer Erickson handled the situation by himself for nine minutes until the deputy arrived in Ella, in the Ella area. We continued to, to assist the sheriff's office by transporting the suspect to the jail. We stayed on scene and helped in anything they needed and we transported him to the jail. So that was nine minutes Officer Erickson was on there, we didn't complain to anybody, we didn't write an email and say you missed a call like they did to us on March twenty-sixth where they're obviously keeping notes. Okay, abandoned vehicle on County Road P and County Road N. Officer Erickson was the only officer on in the entire county at three fifty-five A M. He was asked to assist and he handled the call because the deputy was already home in Mondovi. This was an abandoned vehicle on the roadway that the county highway people called in and there were tracks leading through the snow, they were concerned about the person's safety. Officer Erickson was on scene for nearly fifty minutes, which would have put him, which would have been plenty of time for a deputy to come to the scene, but instead we handled it without a county deputy showing up. This would have caused the city overtime because Officer Erickson would have been past his checkoff time at four A M. Juvenile death investigation, Sergeant Shellhorn was called out for home as the county deputy was in another county on a vehicle pursuit. Sergeant Shellhorn handled this case, though another deputy was called out from home and never came to the scene. Our, our sergeant handled the death scene in the county. Vehicle fatality, Sergeant Shellhorn was the first to arrive at a vehicle crash on Highway ten east of the city, it was a fatality, he did CPR in the middle of the highway in the county, assisting the county. Nine-one-one hangup calls, we've had several examples of us handling county calls for nine-one-one hangups. This relationship is a two-way street and I do not give those, these examples with the hopes that those requests stop, because I don't want that to happen. I want to continue to be able to serve the citizens of Pepin County and I want to do it at a high level. I want to do it in partnership with the sheriff's department like we have been doing for years. But what I don't want to see is badmouthing our police department by county administration at this level. This is inappropriate, it's unprofessional, and it degrades our department when we don't deserve to be degraded. I am proud of our officers and their willingness to assist Pepin County residents. In Pam's last quote, this is the one that got me the most. The article states, "The city of Duran can no longer be depended on as a community partner for backup coverage or even primary emergency coverage for the city of Duran at times." "The city of Duran is covered and protected twenty-four seven, three sixty-five," and yes, this is accomplished by a partnership between the Duran Police Department and the Pepin County Sheriff's Department, and it's about time that they start realizing that. They can't do their job without us and we can't do ours without them. No matter what the outcome is of my statement tonight and this article, we will continue to serve the citizens of Pepin County and we'll do it with pride and we'll make sure that we are there to assist our deputies, because we want them safe. And I want them to be there to assist our officers, because they deserve to be safe as well. Yes, we are not a twenty-four hour agency, we are trying to run our agency like most other agencies in Wisconsin. When we are not available, the sheriff's department covers us. As you guys saw in the meeting and I presented to people, I polled every county in our area and they handle it the way that it should be handled. In the absence of a municipal police department, the sheriff's department covers, without question, without being badmouthing the local paper. We deserve that partnership and I want it to continue. And that's all I have to say.
Nice rebuttal.
Okay, a couple of things, first of all, I'm going to make a statement, if anybody else on the council wants to make a statement, obviously the follow-up to what the chief said. The chief asked me before, specifically about defending his agency and I, and I said, you bet, you have the right to defend your agency and take the opportunity to do it during, during your report. Obviously, I was quite surprised when I bought my courier wedge, when I was getting gas here after I got back to Duran, when I saw that headline too. As trying to be in the, again, and I'm not in every everyday activity, what happens between the agencies and so on and so forth. But the, the situation with, with the, our staffing situation that we have, and then I'm going to say, by the way, I spent eight years on county board before I was down here, in fact, I chaired law enforcement for six. And so and so, I know times have changed in twelve years and so and so forth. It's always been a partnership, we've always worked together and so on and so forth, and obviously expect it to continue that way. But I'm talking about the finance, we understand what, what our situation is to staff with the people that we have and the budget that we have. We obviously receive more, we're going to receive some more shared revenue. And we're looking at the possibility, because we know we're not getting part-time help, that we would hire another full-time officer to possibly cover it, not, hasn't been decided, that'll be a decision made, made throughout the budget process and we'll, we'll do that, so and so forth. The, the one thing about it is, I believe that the county's asking for more help. If you actually look at the five hundred plus thousand dollars that they received in more shared revenue, that they're just as well in financial shape to spend those dollars to put it toward a new officer or a new deputy if that was the case. That's my budget political side of it from the standpoint of, to do that. We're looking at spending, again, decision has been made, their decision has been made, but obviously financially, that, and again, and we talked about spending the county's money, it is our money, I pay taxes here, I pay for the city, I pay county taxes and so on and so forth. But as I said, we are making every effort to put as, put in as many hours as possible and how we're trying, trying to get that done. And obviously I was very frustrated when I saw that article of myself. Anyway, that's my statement, anybody else would like to speak?
Can you do a rebuttal in the paper?
I plan to, yes. I have one other thing that wasn't on my notes, so I obviously forgot it because I put it that way. But Pam also states here, again, I don't know who she's getting her facts from, but they're obviously wrong. Every single weekend for several months prior to July and August of this year. I did a quick poll looking through my scheduling app on my phone, so it's not a hundred percent through, I only got through May before the meeting started, but January, we missed two shifts, February, three, March, two. That's not every weekend in my book, so I don't know who she's getting her facts from, but obviously if you're going to state facts in a public meeting and have those facts quoted in the paper, you would think you would have the actual facts before you did so.
If I could address Mr. Menke's, in, back toward the newspaper thing?
Yeah.
I have to say I'm very disappointed in the newspaper, the editor of, this meeting was on the fifteenth of September. Plenty of time to get our side of the story, to, to, is this true, is rebuttal any of this? We had no contact at all, again, nobody knew this was coming until frankly, a former citizen called me and said, I picked up the newspaper, boy, that's a heck of a headline. So that, that's a concern. Another main concern from a financial standpoint, that again, I would have hoped that county staff would have brought up at this meeting is that the citizens of Duran pay for Pepin County patrol services and dispatch services and jail services. So again, we pay for these services, we brought that up several times in our meetings, it never gets mentioned, it just looks like, you know, again, we don't get paid from them, and nobody means my suggesting that we don't do the backup that Chief, Chief Ridgeway is, is supporting, we always have done. But again, we're paying for this service, to complain about it is, to me is just asinine.
Has anybody reached out to Pam?
We've been in contact for many months, we met, we've had, we've had at least one major meeting, we've asked for more to hash some of this out and it hasn't been reciprocated.
Really? That's not good.
It is not good.
My thing is about the taxes though is, you know, when I moved here back in oh-four, like clearly I wanted to live in a municipality that had law enforcement and that's why I was willing to pay a little extra. You know, in, in taxes, our taxes are higher here in the city than, than out in the county. So I mean, like, that's kind of my stance is like, I have higher taxes because I want extra, you know, police coverage. And, and that's kind of my, my stance is really on that, those taxes, so.
Which we clearly do, I mean, we have extra police coverage.
But our taxes haven't gone down if we're covering less time here.
Well, I think our costs have gone up, I mean, it's all the rest.
I get that, but it's just, it's, it's my stance of like, that's why, that's why you assume taxes are more in the city is because you have extra police coverage.
I get it to me, back to even those, again, we've been trying to get, so it was, I mean, this whole thing started several months ago with the sheriffs, when, when we had the meeting and, you know, the county board chair to his credit said, we're going to make this work. And we had heard absolutely nothing for the entire year until I got a message from, from Ms. Hanson that said, I have concerns because you're not making your own calls. I had three different times, mayor's involved in all these and finally I got it just the other day, and it was those two items that Stan just talked through. And it's like, really? You're going to complain about it? We're paying for that service and you're going to complain about it? Two very minor items, I think, in our, in our point, that's what you're making the big deal about? I don't get it.
To address Matt's budget thing, if I can, the mayor, I'm sorry, can I address Matt's budget, share question? Okay, so our part-time budget is thirty-five thousand dollars. We had, yes, we were going to have plenty of extra money, we're only at like nine thousand dollars of our budget. So yeah, we were going to have extra money that was going to stay in the general fund because of our lack of being able to get part-timers to work weekends, you're correct. But now we're using that because of obviously a leave and then we have another leave coming up in November. So now we're going to, by the end of the year, who knows how much we're going to have extra, because basically we're using a part-timer to fill full-time hours for the next couple of months, but if we wouldn't have had those two situations, yeah. But if we wouldn't have had those two situations, yeah, we would have had a lot of money left over in our part-time budget at the end of the year that would have went back to the general fund. Correct? It's not like Scott has allowed us to use that part-time funds to buy equipment or anything like that.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying like, I moved to this town because I wanted that extra police coverage. You know, I mean, that's why people generally move to a municipality. They want extra police coverage and they want the city sewers and, you know, whatever. And that's just, that's what I want us as council members to strive to keep your police as fully staffed as possible. And that's my only ask. So.
Mrs. Hart, you may along that same vein is that, that obviously when these budget discussions come up here with the extras, we're getting plus some of the money for the thing, that, I mean, the argument to be placed for that we, that we need to go to, and again, I don't want to put the cart too far ahead of the horse, but the argument is, I mean, we are going to look at adding another full-time officer. Why? Because we can't find part-time.
Right.
Can we fit that in the budget to do that? And if that's something we need to do, and not only to help cover some of that weekend stuff, but also again, you got one on leave right now, you got another one coming up with, which are all deserved and all earned and so on and so forth. But the question is, so we're, we're not in that, put in that situation.
Which I very publicly said, like, I will be angry if part of that money isn't used for that or all of it, whatever it takes.
I don't think it'd be all, I think the combination of some of the part-time money plus, I think, gets us there, you know?
I think even with the money, you're having a hard time finding people though, aren't you? I mean, it's just.
Full-time is a lot easier, I shouldn't say, it's not easy. It's easier to find than part-time. You know, yeah, you're probably going to get less than five apps for a full-time position, but at least, at least we're getting apps. Because part-time, we're just not, or if we are, they're only lasting a couple of weeks. We don't even sometimes get them into training and they're gone. So we're, we're kind of, I, I want to, I don't want to say we're wasting money because sometimes it works out where they're here for a few months and we get service out of them. But in a lot of cases, we've wasted money trying to hire part-timers. The most recent one where we sent him to his drug screen and his physical and before he even worked one shift, he was picked up full-time in another agency. There's just so many full-time openings that these new students coming out of the academy don't have to work part-time like we, like we used to when I was first starting. They just don't have to.
If you go back in twenty, twenty-five years ago, you go to the academy, come out of the academy, probably get a couple of part-time gigs.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And then get some experience and so on, do that for a year or so. And then finally you have your, get enough experience that they would hire you. Where now they're taking you straight out of the academy for full-time.
Yeah.
Okay? Anybody else have any questions or make, make comment on the subject?
It's an unfortunate article and obviously there needs to be more communication in the future, apparently.
Yeah. Okay. On a brighter note, discussion, possible action regarding the special event, street closing request for the trunk or treat event on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three from three until five. Something that's similar to past years, Chief?
It is. We will close at, at two. The event goes from three to five, but we'll close the street at two just to give people an hour to get set up and things. We would close from First Avenue through Fourth Avenue West. I talked to Christina and we talked about, you know, are you, did you hear any complaints from business owners? She said, no. I said, I didn't either. So I don't know if you guys have heard any complaints from business owners about us shutting it down. I think it's good for our downtown. It brings a lot of people to town, that's for sure. So, but I, I'm not aware of any complaints and neither was Christina, who helps, who organizes most of this. I will say that so far we have twenty-five people signed up for it. So hopefully we can get, keep getting that raised higher and we'll have a great event again.
Yeah, I haven't heard any, I think people enjoy it, brings a lot of people to town. I don't know if you can get the good weather as you did last year.
I hope so. Well, perfect to do that, so.
Okay, any questions concerning the street closing request? If not, with something like, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event street closure request for trunk or treat on October twenty-eighth from two.
Two to five, yeah.
Two to five.
We have a motion second to approve the special event street closing. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's approved. Next, Fire Department, anything for?
No.
Anything from ambulance?
No.
Okay. Public Works, Matt, I don't know, engineer's report and your monthly report, whatever you've got for us?
Yeah, Russ couldn't make it tonight, so we are still working on a couple of things quick here and then I do want to just kind of give you guys a preview of the Madison Street design that we're going to take to the public informational meeting, which is on Monday night. Monday night, the second, four thirty to six thirty is the public informational meeting, so we'll review the project quickly. But as far as just my report, the black topping has been done. We did our water main patches. We fixed a block and a half of Main Street, got Twelfth Avenue completed today. And you'll see the pay request is on for tonight later on and did a nice patch up by the fourteenth there that was by the ball field. So the black topping is done, our curb work is done for the year. So most of our major projects are winding down. We'll be moving into our, kind of our fall maintenance type schedule. Moving into the Madison Street, this is the design that we are going to take to the public informational meeting, starting at Eighth West and I'll move to Second. Just a couple of things before we move into this. As we walked the project, talked to a few people, got some pro, some concerns, but what some of the people wanted to be addressed. The majority of the people downtown, their issues are parking and drainage was their top two issues. And then as far from an engineering standpoint and a city standpoint, ADA is our, a top priority. With that being said, all of our sidewalks are currently non-ADA compliant. They were compliant for when they were built, you know, fifty, sixty years ago, but they do not meet today's codes. So as you do a project like this, when you get to a certain dollar amount or restructure amount, you have to bring that up to code. ADA code is only two percent sidewalk left to right. And the ramps coming down to, the pedestrian ramp coming down to the street can only be two percent coming down to the street. With that being said, a lot of our current ramps on every corner are eight to twelve percent. So they're almost ten times, not ten times, but a lot more steep than, than what they can be. So we have a preliminary plan here that we're going to take to the PIM meeting. We will get the public's information and then we'll have a lot more extended talk about this design at the Public Works Committee meeting on the ninth.
And so just, real quick, so the reason we wanted to present this to you tonight is because again, this is what's going to be presented on Monday and we wanted to make sure that you folks knew about it and just in case, you know, we don't expect all of you to show up. Just in case you would get questions from somebody and say, well, we, I haven't seen the design.
Yeah.
So as Matt and I talk, it's like, we need to present this just for informational purposes only. No decisions here tonight, as Matt said, we'll talk about it at Public, Public Works coming up and then ultimately a council at some point.
And this design changes too. It's not like I've been sitting on this design for a month and a half, you know? Was this actually just kind of come up with this within the last two weeks here? So Eighth Avenue, not much changes down here. Here's the corner, boat landing up here in this corner. Again, you can see just kind of our standard road width. The blue lines are the curb. That's going to be the proposed new curb. The red here would be the edge of the parking lane. The red in the middle would be the new center line. The black that you see kind of along with it, that's the current existing center line. You know, so you can just see you get a smoother transition in the corner there. Otherwise, eight-foot parking lane, eleven-foot driving lane on each side of the center line and another eight-foot parking.
What's that black and white circle thing right on the corner?
Right there?
Yeah.
Fire hydrant.
Is that a good place to have it, that close to the road on a corner like that?
It'll be moved in the project. What you see on here, like, yeah, that's existing. What you see on here, other than the blue and the red, is all existing.
Okay.
So the water and sewer and storm stuff isn't actually even on here yet.
Got you.
The new stuff anyway, so. Moving down through again, this is Seventh Avenue West. Not much change there. As you can see, obviously the new curb goes through the hydrant, so the hydrant will be moved there. From Seventh moving up towards Sixth, there is a current existing sidewalk here. Really no need for that sidewalk. It's a sidewalk to nowhere. We did talk about this at one of our Public Works meetings about eliminating that. Eliminating that sidewalk there, save the residences' long-term money and, and shoveling and potential repairs. Also save us money in the project not having to, to replace it. Senior Center right here, we will keep sidewalk on that side of the street all the way down to the senior center. Our minimum sidewalk width, the, the ADA standard is four feet, the city standard is five. So when you hear me talk about a minimum of five feet, that's our city standard, but ADA is four. So again, no sidewalk on the other side. You can see right here, this, we're coming up to Sixth Avenue. The old curb here in the white, how it kind of dips and the road widens out here. The road's extremely wide from Sixth to Fifth for no particular reason. We don't need the road that wide. So again, this is the grocery store. So you can see the curb's going to be basically going in the same spot on the, what I'll call it, the black side of the street. On the grocery store side of the street, the curb's going to be coming out. We have a seven-foot grassy boulevard with an eight-foot sidewalk on that side of the streets, on that side of the street. This grassy boulevard gives us a place to, to install currently, right now, all the power poles are in, in sidewalks. We move those out into grass boulevard, easier for maintenance. Gives us places to put our water shut off, put our fire hydrants, so they're kind of out of the way. So that'll be that, that'll be that block. Here's Fifth Avenue right here. Again, we have issues. We want to make sure on the grocery store side that our curbs are kind of in a straight line. So we come through the intersection with a straight curb and then we start slowly tapering that curb back as our angle parking starts here. Down here in the, in the Blacks Office Building area, the curb kind of has to come out. There's a little bump as to meet ADA compliance for the crosswalk coming across the street to get into their building. Without moving that out a little bit, we can't achieve that, that slope. So we are going to change, again, here's the Bubba's Lot, old Bubba's Lot there. This section of the street has parallel parking on it currently. The road's extremely wide. As you can see, the existing width from curb to curb was, is forty-seven and a half. So if we get, take another half a foot, we can get angled parking in here. So now we'll gain more parking stalls on this block compared to what we have. I believe we had ten down there originally. Now we get like, like twelve or thirteen-ish. Coming up to the, to kind of a new design and a new concept. Again, this is going up towards the post office. This curb kind of bumps out a little bit right here. We have some extreme issues with this sign being installed so high that we need to get the curb out here in order to get ADA ramp up to this sidewalk. We have talked with NAPA. Currently, this is all drive over curb over here. They plan on a five-year plan of kind of enclosing this corner in with a building expansion. So they want standard curb over here, which then will allow us to put a couple more angled parking stalls in on this side of the street but still maintain a two-way street going up to the post office. Our new concept or design on, on avenues, we've talked a lot in the, in the future about changing some avenues to one-way streets or parking lots. We have issues on these corners right here with drainage. We have a twelve percent slope from this building corner to the old curb. To help us, to help us achieve that two percent slope, it'd be nicer for us to get these curbs out into the street, bring the sidewalk slope all the way out into the street. We can also then change this avenue to a one-way street and we can add parallel parking if this is a one-way street. So basically you come down Main Street, you would enter here and you would exit onto Madison Street. So this only needs to be nineteen feet wide so one vehicle can exit out. And then we could change this avenue from four parking stalls, four parallel parking stalls right now to a total of eight angled parking stalls. So we gain essentially four more parking stalls on this block by kind of bumping the curb out like that. This little area would then be grass or flowers or plants, kind of the same with this little area here. Grass, flower, plants, benches, you can kind of put whatever you want in, in these areas. So this doesn't, this does not actually cost more because you're still, instead of putting this radius of curb in, you're, you're coming out here and out here, you probably only have about another ten foot on each radius. And you're not putting blacktop and, and having a fifty-three foot wide blacktop path either. So what you save in blacktop offsets what, the little extra concrete that you might have to put in. The only other way to get these intersections to, to be ADA code is we would, that, we would have to essentially pour a curb around the corner of the building. Because we can't really drop the sidewalk because the building face is at that current elevation. So the sidewalk has to go down six inches, we'd have to put a curb to hold the face of the building and, and butt up against the foundation and then drop the sidewalk down, which then would have a potential chance for negative drainage on heavy rainfalls. Because we're coming, you know, Fourth Avenue's on a downhill, Third Avenue's on a downhill. You get, you know, heavier rain in an, in an inch in an hour. They're going to bypass the inlets and then they're going to kind of go in those dipouts and then drain back out as the rain lengthens up. So these concepts help us out with that. It also helps out with pedestrians crossing, getting out in the street a little bit, a little bit more. Moving down to the next block. We did talk about a lot of this at Public Works. The only thing that basically has changed since Public Works are these avenues. When we left our Public Works Committee meeting, we said we try not to do, we didn't want to do bump outs on Madison. We wanted to keep Madison kind of a nice straight two-lane street. And if we had to, we would look into a different avenue, or look into the avenues for bump outs in order to get, get, to get the sidewalks in, in ADA compliance that we need through, that we need through here. Third Avenue's kind of the same way. We can bring out on to, out on to Third. If we're going to bring one corner out, we got to bring kind of all three corners out to keep that curb line in a straight, in a straight path. What we don't want is, is to have the curb way over here and then if somebody comes straight, they'll boom, they run into, into another curb. So we bring this out to help with our ADA ramps and then we can also turn this street into angle parking instead of parallel. But we have enough room here to keep this a two-way street in the meantime. So you still get the two-way street and you gain eight parking stalls versus four. Behind the bank, everything kind of stays the same. Behind the bank, coming up to Second Avenue. Again, we would, we do not have enough room here to keep a one-lane street and do angled park, or parallel, sorry, angled parking on both sides. So this street would be, this one would be kind of unique. What we would do is, is you would enter on First. You'd enter on First, you'd exit on Madison. You could take a right or a left on Madison, but if you took a right, then you'd enter Second Avenue off of Madison Street and you'd exit on the Main Street. That way you can kind of just kind of go around the block and make a nice loop. So that's what Second Avenue could potentially look like. When we do Main Street, we would essentially match the bump outs on Main Street to the avenues as well. It, it's going to look really weird until we do the Main Street project, not kind of having that bump out on, on, I'm using bump out as a terminology here, but not having that on the Main Street side as well. This is what it would look like in, here's Adams and, and Jacob. Parking angled on that side of the street. We do not have room for parking over here to keep our eleven-foot drive lane the way we need it. It's currently really tight down here and the drive lanes aren't exactly legally, legal ten feet. So this is what First would look like. We'd come off of Main, you have your park. So you're gaining two more here, gaining two on Second. Totally with this design, we gain an additional seventeen. Totally with this design, we gain an additional seventeen parking stalls downtown from one end to the other. And then uh in front of the park here, again, we're just back down to our standard eleven-foot driveline, eight-foot uh parallel parking. So this is what we're going to take to the public on Monday night. We will talk to individual, so this isn't just a meeting where they come and listen to me talk, this is an interactional, this is a meeting where we interact. So one person comes in, either myself or a representative from Cedar can take them to a map and we talk to them individually. They leave and then we just keep talking to the next person, the next person, the next person as they come in. So it's not like we, I sit up in the room and give a presentation and everybody sits back here and listens. It's an individual time for you to talk and ask questions about your property, about the project in general. And you'll talk one-on-one with myself and Cedar's representative. And we'll have some big plot maps hanging on the wall or on the tables, um that kinda probably look like the ones down on the wall behind you, so. Um we wanted to get this in front of you tonight, just so that you kinda had an idea of what our concepts were. Uh this is, this is change, change is, either everybody loves change or everybody hates change. But uh essentially this garnishes, this gives us the design that we need to help with our. Our handicap ramps coming off of the corners of these buildings and it, it substantially increases parking. Which happened to be kinda the number one issue that I heard when I talked to these uh specific. Individuals that we went and talked to, we talked to half a dozen different business owners down through there as we've been walking it over the last month or so, so. That's kind of a quick review in a nutshell.
One other point I'd like to make too about the idea about some of the avenues converting either to one-way or parking lots, so and so, but this is nothing new, by the way. This has been in discussion since Ivan Mayer and um we've said about with the number of places that, with the space that we have. There's probably better use for it, is we don't need that many streets going um both ways. Or even the idea of putting parking, and I, I think this meets as you said, and of course, one of the things we always hear about is downtown parking. At seventeen spots down there for, um uh throughout the whole project, obviously, I think is a positive thing. And obviously, we gotta meet ADA, we have to, there's requirements of those, those, those plans.
So in, in some of these corners too, like this can be deceiving, cause you're seeing uh, you're seeing the old crosswalks, you know, like. So there's not gonna be a crosswalk going across here, everyone, we, we don't have to come down across the street, right? We can make people cross in, in certain places, so you're gonna come down and then you're gonna cross into the park and then you're gonna go across. That helps us not bump this corner out, you know, so we are utilizing the ability to shift crosswalks around. To, uh to the best of our, our ability as well, so.
Are semis able to navigate those appropriately?
Here?
Like the bump out curb, or bump out crosswalks?
Yeah, so this'll be a do not enter, so there's no, there's no way.
But they could come.
Yeah, but they could come off of Main Street and come out, uh and then turn. So when you design these kinda rural downtown areas, you design them uh to make sure that your standard box trucks. You know, like your UPS trucks or your tandem axle type trucks can turn these corners. For the one or two times that a semi has to come through here, we do allow them to essentially cross the center line. To, to get back into the, into the driveline, so.
Maybe Matt's question is more pertinent on, was it Second that has the?
Up, this Wisconsin, honestly, I'm kinda worried about the beer trucks.
So if you're coming in wider than having to get out of that narrow, maybe that's a little easier, but.
Yeah, you, so they're gonna be able to turn the ones cur- as of, as it sits today. The ones that we enter from Main Street, they'll be able to turn off a Main Street on them and then exit out. But then when we ever do Main Street and we narrow that, that end up, then they probably won't be able to even turn in there, so. In reality, what we want them, them trucks to do is come in on Second East or come in off the highway. Stay on Main Street till they get down to Third West, where then they should be turning on Third West to go back up to the highway.
So will we do some planning with the businesses that have those delivery trucks that are semis, so that they can get that information out to those companies?
We most definitely can, yes. And I, and like I said, this isn't set in stone, this is what we're gonna present. I will bring you back the public's feedback on whether they absolutely hate it or they absolutely love it, but we don't have a ton of options, right? Um this option is actually more cost-effective than the curb option on the corner of every building. Cause now you're hand-forming curb around, you know, ten-foot radius around every building. And then trying to pour that in, plus the potential for negative drainage um through there in the future. So this is what, the best design that we could come up with to rectify those problems.
I don't think adding parking spots is, you know, is an awesome thing, I don't think you hear of any downtown areas that, that isn't like the big issue, so. For us to be able to add parking is, is pretty neat.
So what's the negative of the one-way besides maybe semis turning, like is there, in change?
Nothing.
Well, more with the one-way, it's about bump outs, we're, we're talking about the one-way, right?
Yeah, the, well, to do the bump outs, we have to turn to, we have to turn. So what the, the negative to, to answer your question, there's really not a negative to a one-way street. Other than it's change and we have to educate the people not, not to do. So like, for example, there'll be signage, right? So uh this is enter here, so there'll be a sign right here that says enter only. And then up here, we would have to install two do not enter signs, you know, kinda like uh River Street down here. When you come, when you come down first and take a left, there's two big signs that say do not enter, right? And then when you go down by the corral, it says, there's a sign there that says one-way. You know, so we, we, we have to sign it and then it's just gonna take some time for people to get used to it and understand, cause they've always been able to. You know, it's gonna be pretty simple for First Avenue here, cause you that, you're entering off of Main, so you can still go, take that left off of Main all the time. The one that might be a little difficult is Second Avenue, where you're not gonna be able to enter off of, off of Main, okay? That's the only one you're not entering off of Main.
This was, this hasn't always been a one-way down here either, has it?
No, no, it's not a one-way, only a one-way uh, uh down behind the. I can't think of.
Like that avenue right there, we had talked for years about just turning that into straight parking lot, so you won't even have to. But this obviously works better with the project going on in the future.
On Fourth Avenue West, they're across from the Bubba's Lot. We have a, don't we have an ordinance if any new construction has to have extra parking spots for square footage? Do we have anything like that?
Not in the business, not in the downtown business.
Okay, that was my question, whether those parking stalls would count if that, towards that, but if we don't have.
There, there was very, very few businesses downtown that had any sort of.
And um again, this starts at four thirty?
Starts at four thirty, Monday, Monday's the, the second.
And as I mean, I've talked to a couple residents that have asked me about it, and I said, "Your perfect opportunity." He says, "Well, I'm gonna come to that, this is, it's a great, you can actually talk to the people that are designing it, you talk to city staff. And you can sit down and ask them, and they answered good questions, they said, and I said, I tried to answer a little bit of them, but I said, "If you come there, guess what? They'll be happy to explain it to you and we'll have the people that um designed it so and explain it."
And you guys are all welcome to come too, I would just caution you to make sure that we don't have like fo- five or six of you in the building. Any other quick questions on this before we move on?
Any other questions on that?
Uh other than that, I don't have anything until the next agenda item.
Okay, any other questions about the project? Sounds good, okay. Um so anyway, so you, you got everything for the updates and then the discussion possible action regarding the bids for the Taran Park swimming pool.
Okay, so as every, uh you have a sheet in front of you, it's also on the TV for those that don't have the sheet in front of you. Uh yesterday was the uh bid opening for the pool bids. Um just to clarify, we, we, we uh did the bid a little bit different thi- this go around. Last go around, we did uh civil demo separate, we did the pool people separate and we did the building separate. This go around, we chose to go with what I will call a, a general contractor or one company. And then that company hires the pool sub and hires the uh site sub and, and hires the building sub if they don't have their own building crew. So uh that, so the base bid that you see in front of you includes the building, all the necessary stuff in the building, the pool. All the necessary stuff in the pool and all of the site work and utility work that we need to do around the site. Then we alt, we did seven alternates. So basically, the things that are not pertinent to building a pool, we put as alternates. So you can see the concession stand was an alternate, the shade structures are an alternate. And then the tot slide, climbing wall, water sprayer, water uh fan sprayer and that pump. That's not the main pool pump, these features like the water sprayer and the fan sprayer need their own special pump to operate. So for example, if you wanted to include the water sprayer in the bid, you have to buy the pump with it. So, you know, they're, they're kind of a package deal, but we laid it all out a little separate. Uh we got three bid packages, uh one from Myron Construction. Um their base bid was four million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine twenty-five. I will not read all of the uh alternates, but then the total bid with the seven alternates was four million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two fifty. The second bid uh was Duran Builders, uh their base bid was three million, six hundred, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred. Uh if you add on all of their alternates, uh it comes to a total of three million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four. Uh Rome Construction was the third bidder for a base bid of four million, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six. All of their alternates uh tallied up to four million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six. So moving on down the paper here, the low bidder uh was Duran Builders. Uh their base bid was again, three million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred. If that's all we did was the base bid, we have roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of engineering that has to be paid for. There's two parts of engineering, there's design engineering and there's construction engineering. So we got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of construction engineering that needs to be paid for when we build. And then we uh always put a four percent contingency uh off the project. So if you only did the base bid, your minimum amount uh payment would be three million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred. There's a lot of different combinations here, right? I can do the base bid in alternate one, I can do the base bid in alternate two, I didn't put every possible combination on this piece of paper. But if you wanted to do the complete package with the, all the alternates in the base bid. Um including that hundred and fifty thousand dollar engineering, including the contingency again. You'd be at four million, two hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay, so the, to go through the schedule again, we have until December fifteenth.
We have until December fourteenth to notify the uh, the bidder that we are going to proceed with construction.
Or not.
Or not, so by the fourteenth, so we set that up. Um the reason why we set up the fourteenth is we wanna keep it before the first of the year as. We were hearing from uh these pool suppliers of a January one price increase. So if we give them a yes or a no by the fifteenth, that gives them the chance to order the equipment before the January. Sometime in January, price increase, so. Um that gives us until the council meeting on the thirteenth. That night, we would have to do a yes or a no decision, that'd have to be the bottom line night, December thirteenth.
So we need all the money by December thirteenth, basically?
And my number was uh by the first of December, let's um, and if we could get it done beforehand. Um obviously, these, the swim club was represented at the bid opening, so they know what the numbers are. And obviously, we know what they have, the, a couple of things that will be happening on uh, on our side. Um uh over the next few months, um being any assist we can give to the fundraising, if anybody has an idea about somebody else to speak to. The one thing about, now we sorta have a number, we said, "This is where we're gonna be and this is where we need to be." The one thing I'm gonna ask a few council members possibly to assist with uh, with some of the major donors to meet. To, to bring um the council in to some of those, I've made a number of those meetings myself. But um I probably gonna request some people to, to attend some, just to make sure where everybody understands and then we um uh bring that in. Cause um if somebody is um interested in being a major donor, obviously, we wanna make sure we have all the information, whether it's to speak to. That, speak to sta- our staff concerned finance or uh and so and so forth. And obviously, those follow-up meetings will happen, um hopefully in the next month or so, and then hopefully we'll see where we're at. Um um and again, um and again, so we know what we need to do. Um and I think these are doable numbers, I don't think anybody's, um I mean, we had an idea coming in, we might have to make some of those decisions at the end. Do we take a few of these things out, so we can get to that number, um and uh, and so on? Uh the one thing about it is, there's possibly somebody out there as a donor would see one of those alternates and say, "Well, I'll, you know, that's something I'll step up." Because I think a pool should have it, and I, I think that might be the opportunity for, for some of them, for some of them to step up. Um and, and I don't wanna assume this, but I'm thinking, one of the things that probably helped us in the bidding was the schedule. Cause before, we had a pretty tight window, now we've given them basically next year to do the project. Cause again, once we lose, uh we're gonna use the pool season, they're gonna have the opportunity, I think that helped us, Matt, do you agree?
A- a- in a, in a retrospect, there's a little bit, yeah, I think that kept the numbers essentially the same as last time. Cause these numbers aren't much different than last time, I think it kept us in that ballpark versus jumping us into the upper fours or closer to five, so.
So on, on the list of all the alternates here, which ones could be added after the fact if you just start with the base?
Uh pretty much all except for the concession stand. So I mean, just to be clear here, the plumbing, underground plumbing is gonna be there for all of them, that's in the base. You're just basically buying the feature, then we'll have to be hooked up to that plumbing and mounted uh to the pool deck.
Uh so that's. Something needs that pump, you said.
Yes, so.
So there's a couple that would have to be.
There's a couple, so for example, the water sprayer, if you wanna buy that water sprayer for eight thousand dollars, you gotta buy a fifteen thousand dollar pump with it, right?
But is the piping still there?
The pipings will still be there, all we pretty much gotta do is buy the pump and, and mount it and bolt it in. And then you'll have to buy the sprayer and mount and bolt them, so the pu- the, the piping will be there. Same with the shade structures, the plan uh is to put like the anchors in the ground. So essentially, all you're buying, now when I say shade structures, there's multiple shade structures. Plus there was a gazebo type of deal that was supposed to be built over in the corner, so this isn't just a price for a couple umbrellas. But the umbrellas that we were going to buy, or in there, we will have, the base is essentially installed, you just have to go buy the umbrella. And then the gazebo, you can, you'll have to build that, gazebo's not the correct word here for that I'm looking for, but you'll get the, you get the hand.
It's, it's close, cause it was like a, it was like, almost like a sand.
Uh so the only thing that is not going to be prepped for you is essentially the concession stand, cause I, you know, I can't prep, I can't.
Right.
Put anything, you know, when I say we will do our best to like, we'll make sure there's extra room in the electrical panel. We'll make sure that the plum- there's, the plumbing in the building is over to that end of the building, so that they can tie onto later in the future, right? So we'll do our due diligence inside the current building to make sure that the expansion can happen. Um but I can't prep you for the expansion.
Right. We call it upgrade from uh Joe's Hot Dog stand to his truck.
Do we have, like, does the swim club give us updated numbers recently?
Of what they have?
Yeah.
Sure.
So what's, I mean, I, I think what it boils down to, we're, we're about the same boat where we thought we were going to be, just about a million dollars short.
That's counting their pledges. So they have people pledged out five years, ten years, they don't have.
We basically have to talk to anybody who's about being a major donor, the maximum we're gonna go is five.
Okay.
Because for our financing situation, that, that's the number that we've requested, is the maximum that they go. And then once they're interested in doing that, we'll sit down and talk about, we'll sit down with the finance part about figure how we're gonna do that.
And are you talking a million short for the complete or the base?
Um.
The base.
Base, yeah, exactly, base, I'm sorry, yeah. Cause that's really where, where we've been, yeah.
So you're planning on having the city finance what they don't have, what they have pledged but don't actually have in hand?
We would have to do short term financing, correct?
Okay.
And at this point, that is only one of the donors.
Yeah.
The, the, I, I, I don't know that I've heard from the swim club if they have anyone else that's on pavement planning.
At this point.
I mean, obviously what they have in the bank, it's just people just giving.
Well, I'm just concerned if we have to finance too much, we may.
And I, I don't know if that is, but it would be concerning. I, I, but I believe hopefully we're to the point where we, we wouldn't have to and it would be short enough term that, you know.
Well, five years, it's five years. That's gonna, that's gonna cut into our five year plan if we have to finance too much.
Well, we understand that, yeah, I mean, but I just, you know, I'm thinking that if, once the project starts with some folks, then they start to come in, it's not like they're just waiting, you know, and doing that type, you know, so. Any other questions?
Well, what, what is, what are you, I guess, what are your thoughts on the concession stand? Because.
I think for these, my personal opinion, I'll give you my opinion for those prices, you should not have a concession stand.
I agree.
That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, we don't allow food in the pool now area now, do we?
We would, if we did have a concession stand with food, beyond the fact to operate it, you would also have to restrict the food. You can't, you, you'd have to say you can go no farther than an eating area or something. Cause again, yeah, we can't have food running around the pool, we just.
But I don't know why we would make that decision now.
Right.
If it gets, if somebody writes the check, you'll do it, build it.
Well, I, I wasn't expecting a decision, I'm just giving you my opinion.
And we also said that, and obviously the swim club having some input into also what they believe that, you know, the supporters of this, would, some opinions about what was more important than, you know, they would, and that's, that's what they should do. I mean, give us some, you know, feel what, what they feel, you know? Any other questions? We said this is not the time to be shy, not about questions, about if we have ideas about trying to get to that number, don't be shy. I'll be, we'll be all happy to meet with anybody.
Is there a way we can see who all is in their, the GCs like for subs? Or do they not know that, like they, when they submit that, Matt, do they say?
They do not have to submit to me who their subs are until, at the, at the, at the bid opening, they don't have to submit me that stuff. After we award it, then we require a list of their subs to make sure they're qualified.
Sure.
So until we award this, I can ask them.
No, no.
But usually we do not go after that information until we award, until we award it. And then after we award it, we will ask for a list of subs to make sure they're qualified.
Okay, so the council would know prior to any, any approval of.
Any other questions? Now, there's no action to be taken here, but obviously said, thanks everybody for their hard work to get us to that point. Next discussion possible action regarding the final twelfth avenue yeast project payment request for next level excavating in the amount of nine hundred and forty four dollars. And forty four cents, sorry. Of course, this was a contingency, we held back, correct?
Yes, this was a contingency that we held back. Blacktop was done today, which this contingency doesn't have any effect on that. Basically, the only thing they had to do was hang the dead end sign and they accomplished that here a couple of days ago. So far as they, they have met their, their obligations to the contract.
All in all, good work.
All in all, good work, yes.
And as you mentioned, like the blacktop to win today, that was a separate contract with.
Correct.
Okay, any questions concerning the application for payment number two, final payment for the twelfth avenue project? Hearing none, would like, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the final payment to next level for nine hundred and forty four dollars and forty four cents.
Second, we have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Supervisor Raisler?
Yes.
Supervisor Menke?
Yes.
Supervisor Hooker?
Yes.
Supervisor Weiserbeck, Weisenbeck, sorry.
Yes.
Supervisor Hayden?
Yes.
Motion to agree to. Okay, let's pay the bills. Do you have a agenda or something?
Uh, I don't. Yeah, with Russ not here tonight.
Okay, we get it. Just a reminder, of course, we do have a number of committee meetings coming up with, at budget time. Now, I do see that the, on the agenda here, that the public works is still on the fourth, I believe we moved that.
Correct.
That's the ninth.
That's the ninth.
That's the ninth, so that's the only thing.
Yeah, cause it was on a different sheet cap, I'm sorry, Angie had it on the updated minutes, you know, but not.
And the public works. Public safety or safety meeting prior to the next council meeting, correct?
Yeah.
And regular on the eleventh and then finance on Monday, October twentieth.
And so we don't have a time for either of those. But I'm, for the public works, I'm thinking probably five, probably same for public, for safety.
If everybody can make it, we always go earlier for the public, we always go four o'clock.
We quit, yeah.
If it's possible, if everybody can make it.
Yeah, cause I, I think the public works meeting is gonna be the longer meeting by now. And we can clarification of all the works Monday, October ninth.
At four now.
At four PM, if that works for everyone. Oh, shit, sorry.
Evidently, Angie's, Angie's.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the vouchers, roll call please.
House member Weisenbeck?
Yes.
House member Hooker?
Yes.
House member Hayden?
Yes.
House member Menke?
Yes.
House member Raisler?
Yes.
Vouchers are approved. Any other future agenda items for discussion? And obviously we have the list of upcoming committee meetings. Otherwise, would someone like to give a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. We have a motion second to adjourn, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no.